Holy Lord, we thank you for this opportunity to meet together. Lord, we thank you for the charge we've been given to represent the city of Riverton. Glad we just asked that you'll make our time together productive. That you would just help us to better serve. It's reflected in this.
Would the city clerk please conduct the roll call?
Yes, Your Honor. Councilman Mike Bailey.
Here.
Councilman Martin Canaan.
Here.
Councilman Jonathan Fabian.
Here.
Councilman Lee Martinez.
Here.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Here.
Councilwoman Holly Jibben.
Here.
Mayor John Lars Baker.
I am present and I declare that we have a quorum. The chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda for tonight.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Seconded. Been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Any discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The agenda has been approved. Our item of business this evening is Finance 101 presented by the Administrative Services Department. City Clerk's report.
Ron, I'm gonna break in here for a second. I'd like to introduce Megan Sims. She is our new City Secretary. She started with us on Monday and she's doing a great job and we're excited to have her on board.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Counsel, coworkers, peers. It's a pleasure. It's a pleasure to talk about finance. We're high tech tonight. As you can see, I have my nice little lapel microphone.
That's what I thought. You were getting weak as you walked away.
How's that? Is that better?
That's better.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
And that's also so I can interrupt these two.
Okay.
So.
Excellent.
So, we went and did a quick run-through on finance today and it only took us about an hour and 15 minutes. Without questions, it'll take about two and a half hours with you. So if you would be patient, we'll try to get you home by midnight. How am I doing with the microphone? So people ask, what's governmental fund accounting? And if some of this is redundant for some of you, I apologize. But we have to think about the level of people that we have that haven't been involved in governmental fund accounting and people that have been involved in governmental fund accounting for 30-some years. So we're gonna give you a one-on-one, 101 on this. The city, the fund accounting is simply accountability. We put certain funds. Am I cutting out?
Now, what it is, Courtney, is when you turn your head to the side, then you get closer to the mic.
Oh, so when we talk.
That's it.
Just kidding. So when we talk about general fund accounting, we're putting certain funds in certain pockets and that's all it is. It's gonna work or not. Where's my Adam? So we have two types of funds.
Someplace here.
I can't be next to that, I know that. How's this? Okay, good. We'll try this.
Cool.
Yep. My backside torsion. Am I? Well, if I had you. Is it okay, Adam? Okay. Thank you very much. Leave it to the tech guys. So, put simply, we have governmental funds and proprietary funds. Governmental funds are our general fund, economic development 1%. You can see those funds up there. Very simple funds. The senior center endowment fund, debt service fund, and 911 fund are what we call restricted funds. In other words, they have a law attached to them. And so that's why, you'll find out about those later. Our proprietary funds are enterprise funds, so water, sewer, sanitation. I won't mention airport much tonight. Been mentioned enough. This is my show. So, tonight, we're not gonna talk much about airport. But, so, if I would have my druthers, airport wouldn't be a separate fund. It would be in the general fund, but that's not here nor there. Internal service fund is like a debt service that we had on a water project. So, the general fund is our primary operating fund and it accounts for all the financial resources. So, streets, parks, administration, fleet, all those things, all those services that you see out there every single day are general fund. And we're required to submit annual municipal budgets every year in accordance with state statutes. These are the funds that we have, as I mentioned earlier. Of course, you know the water fund. This is taken straight from our audit report, by the way. So it's not a lot of this language, it's a language that we came up with as we work with auditors year-round. And when we present the audit report, this is already in there. So if you wanna look at the audit reports, it's on our website. We're very proud of our audit report. So the water fund is about safe and potable water. Sewer fund is about maintaining a dependable system for collection and distribution. Sanitation is about maintaining a dependable system for collecting and disposing of solid waste. Then, of course, the airport fund is about operation and maintenance of the Riverton Regional Airport. The cost for goods and for services for these funds strictly based on user fees. So what we have in our cash and what we have in operating grants and contributions are what makes up those funds. If we didn't charge user fees, they would be like a general fund. You'd have to rely on taxes or something else to support that system. So, user fees is a big percentage of what we do at the enterprise funds. Mayor Baker asked, and I'll just touch on this briefly, why we are on a modified accrual basis. Before I came to the city of Riverton, Riverton was on an accrual basis, which meant that their expenses and their revenues were as they happened. So if I had an interest-bearing account, I would book that interest daily because we earned it daily. If I had an expense, I would book it the minute I picked up the phone and ordered a box of envelopes. That's what full accrual is. We're on the other side, we're kind of cash basis versus modified accrual. The only reason we're modified accrual is because of our utilities, our enterprise funds. So, when Mia sends out bills, we act like we already have that money, right? As the bills come in, it draws that amount down. It's considered a receivable, really. So that's why we have a modified accrual, but we're strictly cash basis, which means as we receive the revenue through a statement or a fax that the state has given us our supplemental funds or mineral royalties and gas tax, then we book it then. Same with expenses. When we get an invoice from the supervisors, that's when we put it down as a claim and that's booked as an expense. So it's a very simple process. By the way, accrual is very labor-intensive from an administration standpoint. When I first came here, we had a form that was in triplicate or duplicate. And they went to all different departments. And I'll tell ya, what happened is, and what very easily happens with expenses, is someone will pick up the phone and order something. Then someone will turn an invoice in. And if we're not careful, we double-book that expense. I can tell you very truthfully and honestly that we double-booked a lot of expenses because we didn't have the personnel in place, that kind of system. So that was a main guiding factor in why we changed to a cash basis. GASBEE 34, I know you hear about GASBEE 34 a lot. GASBEE 34 is simply the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. 34 is the one that's responsible for all the governmental unit financial reporting. And this, I can remember in 1997, 98, when this first came on, it was a huge thing with municipalities because they weren't used to a certain kind of financial reporting. They weren't used to that much of a transparent reporting process. Also, they weren't used to an MDNA. Our MDNA, which is Management Discussion and Analysis, is simply a report to our citizens and to you as elected officials of why we have changes in the money. So why our sales tax goes up or down? What's the percentage that it goes up and down? Even on expenses, we have to put in there why our capital changed, why our fleet changed, and why personnel changed. And a lot of it, and all that's tied to tables and all that's tied to the financial report. So it takes, it's about 10 or 12 pages and it takes Gloria and I. We're down to about a day now, right? It used to take us two weeks. So we're getting a little bit better at it. Operational versus non-operational, the simplest way to understand this concept is operational is the only thing that is, that has true statutory requirements on it. In other words, it's a governing body. You have to appropriate what you're going to spend. You have to be transparent with the public. That's why they address encumbrances and they address inter-fund loans in there and all that kind of stuff is because when it comes to operations, they wanna make sure that you're living on what you should be living on and you're living within your means. Non-operational is simply supplemental funds, which, you know, that's a nice lump sum, 700 or 800,000 that we get usually in July and August of every year. There's no string, it's attached to supplemental funding. But historically, the city of Riverton has given that to third contracts for services and capital projects or fleet placement. This is a very timely issue for this council, I believe, because we're getting into the budget process. Again, the fiscal year budget process has criteria in accordance with state statutes. Departments have to submit requests. In other words, they wanna know where the employees are sitting as far as their needs, maintenance, equipment, personnel. They submit that to the budget officer, which is Gloria. Then the proposed and adopted budget, and they tell us what has to be in that. So if you look and see, well, why do we put a budget message before our budget every year? Statutory requirement. They wanna make sure Stephen knows exactly why you're spending the money and what. And he has to have a reason in there. So then, after all of that is said and done, then it has to be reviewed and considered. And you only have 24 hours after you've received that budget to approve it. And you have until the 3rd Tuesday of June to approve that budget. So it's pretty tight. That was statutorily. This is what we do on a citywide basis. We discuss our vision for the upcoming year. Actually, I think we're gonna try that this year. But we're gonna discuss what our vision is this year. What do we need to see? What are? It's not what our wants are, what our needs are. We used to be, Kyle brought a great term during our meeting last week. He talked about pillows and I was talking to Mayor Baker about that also during that meeting. We used to pillow our accounts. It was called padding, really. We don't do that anymore. But what happens with something like that is our employees get so used to just not pillowing anymore that when we have an emergency and there's no place to pull any money. From a budget perspective, not from a cash perspective. So what I'm talking to you is just strictly about the guideline, the budget that we pass. What happens is we come to mid-year and we have divisions that are so tight because there is no pillowing in there. In other words, we have gotten them trained, and I'm not so sure this is a good idea. We've gotten them trained to, when we hire somebody, we don't say, okay, we're gonna put that salary in for a year. We say, what month are you gonna hire them? When is their merit? And so it's all directly tied to those numbers. And I'm not sure that's a good thing. Because if something goes wrong with a piece of equipment, we have no place to move any money. And it becomes very micromanaged doing it that way. So hopefully, we'll have a different vision this year about how we handle the budget. So we establish a budget calendar, which you will get. We will put it on our website for the citizens. We have, as senior staff, we have discussion regarding major needs. Does the chief of police need three more police officers? Does he need four more vehicles? Does he need a Hummer? What does he need? So we'll start talking about that stuff. Then we have one-on-one meetings, which is all the supervisors go to Gloria Hardman, who's our finance director. And she sits there with them and looks at their line items and they say, well, I don't think I spent that much. That's when she'll get into our software program and say, well, this is the detail. This is what I show you spent. Oh, I remember that. Or, no, that had to have been miscoded and I didn't do that. So it's a real good meeting. We didn't do that probably until, I don't know, Gloria, probably three or four years ago, we started that. And I think it's worked out real, real well. Not to mention, we get to spend time with the supervisors and understand what their problem areas are. And April is the meat of the budget. April is when we begin our revenue projections because a lot of times, we don't get that information from WAM. We get sales tax, revenues, use tax, mineral royalty, supplemental funds, all that kind of stuff after the legislature has happened, if there's any changes. We get all that stuff from WAM. This year, I'm proposing a budget retreat. I know we haven't done that in the last couple of years and I think that that helps the communication. And I think we're gonna have the ability to do that this year from what Mr. Weaver said. After we talk about that, we have a one-on-one meeting between the department head and administrator, the city administrator. Then the staff reviews the total budget. Then after we review it, we send it to finance and Mr. Weaver has said this year that we're going to bring it in front of finance again this year to have them preview our budget and ask questions. And, you know, if you wanna dig into the line items, dig into the line items. You wanna know why gas has gone up 30%? I could show you why it's gone up 30%. If you wanna know why someone's salary line items have decreased by 17%, we can show you that it was probably a personnel change. Either somebody left and that was a vacant position, they changed their health insurance, there's just a lot of different variables. And we can find that out for you. So after that review, we start printing the budget workbooks, which is a working document for the council as a whole. May and June, the first week of May, we print the budget workbooks. Third week of May, we start the budget work sessions. I think we've had one, it's gone from one to three evenings. It just depends on how many changes that we're presenting to you as a governing body. Second week of June, we have to have the public hearing and then adoption of the resolution and then we distribute the finalized budget books, which we also post on our website for the general public. So, when I first came here in February of 2007, we had just bought a new software system. I have been asked by a couple municipalities lately, if you had, if you wanted Black, would you prefer Black Mountain Software or CASL, which is another legal, or another governmental fund accounting system here in Wyoming? And they're out of Utah, based out of Utah as well. But what would you prefer? And I really had to say, I would prefer Black Mountain Software, mainly because it's to the second in-time reporting. In other words, the minute Mia puts in a claim to be processed, it pulls it out of the budget and we can see that. So we don't have to make any guesses. It's really good at the end of the year or during a budget amendment when we don't have to make any guesses. The only guess we have to make is when you have 118 employees in your checkbook, right? I don't know what's out there. Gloria, yeah, we don't know what's out there until we receive it on a desk. So that's a little bit difficult. I mean, how would you like to give your wife your debit card, right? Yeah. So that's what we do on a daily basis. Anyway, Gloria is going to go through the Black Mountain Software a little bit, give you a preview, preview of what we can do. We really like the system. Once you understand one module, you'll understand them all because it's that thorough. You want me to stay on?
Fine. Courtney's asked me to show you some of our reports. This is our actual software that we use every day. The first report that I wanted to show you was one of the budget reports. So when you ask us about budget and where everybody stands, we can show most current information. Okay, our budget report, we can look at all the funds or we can look at one fund. And this is broken down. The first one we'll look at is the general fund. It's broken down by the departments. And on this page, you'll see mayor and council, community service, city administrator, and municipal court. Then you can see the line items in each one of those departments. If we go down here to municipal court, going, whoops. Looking at the titles above, you can see committed current month. So that's what we've spent this month. Committed year-to-date, that's what we've spent. So committed year-to-date for salaries in mayor and council, $34,500. Our original appropriation for salaries for mayor and council is $54,000. The current appropriation is $52,000 and we have $17,500 to spend, which we've now spent 66% of the budget. And 66% of the year has elapsed, so we're right on track. We go down to municipal court, you'll see it's very similar. Again, year-to-date, we've spent $84,034.42 for the salary line item. Budgeted, $129,930. Now that number is the same number you'll see in the budget book. Occasionally, when you see the current appropriation, that might have changed. That's due to a budget amendment or we've had to move money around within the line items. We have $45,895 yet to expend and we're at 65%. If I go to the next page, you'll see the total of this department. Year-to-date committed is $178,023.52. The current and original appropriation is $263,140. And available appropriation is $85,116. And so that's true through the general fund. We can also look at enterprise funds. So far, in the Economic Development Fund, we've spent $27,100. Our original appropriation was $1,148,900 and we've only spent 2%. And that's true then for all our funds down through the water, sewer, sanitation, and airport fund. Another report I wanted to show you was also a budget report, but it's our revenue budget report. So this is what we pull, we wanna see where we are by revenue. And again, it's broken down by funds. This is the general fund. It's broken down by categories, local revenue, licenses and permits, intergovernmental revenues. We also have fines and other revenue, which is a very small category. The very first one we look at is the property taxes. Received year-to-date, $273,116.09. Estimated revenue was $385,000 and we've received 71% of our budget. Another one under licenses and permits is our liquor licenses. Received year-to-date, $42,022.56. Our estimated revenue was $43,000. We're at 98%. So we can go back to the end of the general fund. And so far, in revenue in the general fund, we've received $6,384,406. Our estimate was $9,354,252 and we're at 68% of the revenue in the general fund.
Sorry, Adam took my mic away. This is what we look at when it comes to a budget amendment. Are we in line with our expenditures and our revenues? So it's very easy for Gloria and I to go through here and say, okay, why are licenses and permits down at 8%? Well, because licenses come in in March, February, January, and February, right? December and January, liquor licenses, right? SRO, $240,000, thanks to the chief. We bring that in, but we have to bill that. So it also gives us kind of an indicator, are we doing our job and trying to get the funds? We had $500,000 in county, Riverview Road county portion. We thought, why aren't we getting that in? Well, we didn't bill the county for that. They're not gonna fork over $500,000 because it's in our budget, right? So a lot of this is something that we have to initiate. It's not just gonna be sent to you by a fax like the state does with the sales and use taxes, says, here's your money, it's in the bank.
Okay, we'll go to the end of the report and we'll see where we stand right now. Through all the funds, we've received $17,86,193. Our budget projection was $30,507,662 and we're at 56%, 56% overall through all the funds. Another report I thought I'd show you would be, we can even break it down. Another report I thought I'd show you would be, we can even break it down so that we know what months our funds come in. And that'll help us when we look at something, and we're only at 40% and 66% of the year has gone, we can analyze whether we're really down in revenue, or if, in fact, typically that revenue doesn't come in until later in the, or in the year, actually. This is a 12-month spread. Again, this is a budget report, but this is our actual dollars in revenue that we've received. And I wanted to show you property tax, because I pointed it out in the previous report. This breaks it out by month. You can see in July, we received $6,763. In September, we only received $1,571. In November, we received $57,000. In December, $97,000. So, you can see it really fluctuates. And that's just because that's when they send out the statements for, or for property tax. So, in property tax, so far, we've collected $273,116. Similar also with the liquor licensing. In July, we collected $150,000, which is catering permit. Again, in August, we collected $200. When we get over to December, we've collected $34,864. And in January, $4,621, for a total of $42,022. So, it's erratic. We can't bank on those happening every month. It just depends on the revenue and the revenue source. Just a couple more reports I wanted to show you. One's a detailed query. I wanted to show you how much detail we actually capture here. Okay. This is Mayor and Council's travel and training account. So, you can see that we have a listing of every claim that we've paid, a description of what it was for, the vendor who was paid, and the dollar amount, and the accounting period in which it was paid in. So, if you were to come to us and ask us, where did your travel training budget go? We can print this out and give it to you. You can see just exactly where every dollar in your travel training budget was spent. And we use that a lot in our reports. Another report, basically, it's the same one, but it's just, we can pull it another way. If you ask me how much we've spent in electricity over the year, and citywide, I can give you City Hall Building Maintenance. So far, you can see all the payments that we've made to Rocky Mountain Power. And so far, we've spent $28,662. Public Services, we've spent $1,748.66. And we can go through all the departments that were actually charged for electricity. And when we come down, I can tell you how much we have spent in the general fund. The generals fund, so far, we've spent $48,000 for electricity. And at the water plant, so far this year, we've spent $26,385. And in the sewer plant, we've spent $95,473, for a total over, through all the funds and all the different departments. So far, electricity, we've spent $206,487. So, it's just a little, it's kind of, when you look at the full scope of things, it's kind of interesting, how much we actually do spend. One last report. And it's a report that we've been providing to you. I wanted to show you how we pull it up, and that it's, comes straight from our system. This is the income statement summarized. And this statement is over all the funds. When you see the upper portion here, is the revenue portion, and that's all the revenue that we've received in the city. So, you can see that the year-to-date is $16,680,984. And we're, according to this, we're at 55% of the budget. And this was as of the end of February. So, it doesn't coincide just exactly with the other reports that I've been showing The lower portion is the, are the expenses broken down by department across all funds. Mayor and Council is at 67%, $88,693. Our Community Development is at $254,342. So, just by, just on a glance on basically one sheet of paper, you can see where all the departments are, the percent of budget that they've spent, or up above the revenue that we've received. So, it's just a really quick and easy report to read. And at the end of the report, you'll see current year-to-date expenses, the budget, and we're at 58% as of the end of February. So, that's what I had to show you there, and I just wanted to explain a little bit of the process that I go through every month. Every month, are all our subsidiary ledgers, which are the payroll, utility billing, and accounts receivable, are balanced to the general fund. That's usually happens within the first week of every, every month, so that when you get these reports, you can rely on them. They've been balanced, they are in balance. As a part of that, I also do the bank reconciliation. We have seven bank accounts that I reconcile. Our major one is the operating account. We run about 3,300 transactions in and out of that. And at the beginning of every month, then I balance our bank statement that we get from the bank to the information that I have in the account, accounting system. Some of the other bank accounts that we have, we have a municipal court bond account, we have a senior center account that we use to pay the senior center bills out of, we have a Riverton rendezvous account, which again, we pay the rendezvous expenses in and out of that. We have YO Star, senior center endowment account, which is where the endowment funds are held, and then our YO Star pooled account, which is where our reserves are for all the general fund, water, sewer, and sanitation are kept. Do you have any questions for me right now, or?
We're in March. Are we on a, this is, I could've been asleep or wherever, are we on a budget, in January to January, or December 31st to December 31st?
We're on a fiscal year budget. It's-
And our fiscal year ends when?
June 30th.
So, essentially, we're at nine months.
Yeah, we're just starting in, yeah.
And in some of our accounts, we're at less than 50%. Is that because we're anticipating money coming in at a later date?
Some of our accounts do. Some of them pay quarterly, some pay semi-annually. We'll actually receive checks from them.
What I mean, we're saying we're budgeting, we're budgeting, we're at $16 million, we're budgeting $39 million, and yet, we're that far apart. If that were my checking account, and I had spent $16, and I budgeted $39, I'm looking at it, and I'm thinking, I'm in trouble. But obviously, I'm not. But is there a way of lining that up so that we are in line with our budget and with expenditures?
As long as our expenditures are within the same range, as long as our expenditures are at 58%, which is, I believe, where they are, our revenue's lagging just a little bit behind, but our expenditures are, are within that 50% as well. So, hopefully, we'll not, we'll come up real close, come to the end, end of the year.
I might comment there, that say, the property tax money that we get from the county, that's, you have to make that property tax payment in May, and so then, this, the city gets their money in June. So, half of the money that you would get out of property tax, you're not going to see until the last month of the, of the fiscal year.
That's right.
Okay, so, so that lags behind. And so, then it's important for us to have cash in the bank, and so, our cash in the bank and our budget are two different things. So, then we've got cash in the bank, reserve funds that we use to cash flow on, so that, but then, when we get to June 30th, all of that gets evened up.
And Mia would like to show you accounts payable and accounts receivable.
So, one of my major responsibilities is also handling the accounts payable and receivable process. And so, I want to give you a brief synopsis of the way that an invoice travels through our system and how it's paid. But before I do that, I wanted to introduce you to the idea that we do have a purchasing policy within the city, as far as purchasing limits and the appropriate procedures that our employees should be following when we are paying invoices. The first thing is that all purchase receipts and invoices include a signed perjury statement on those, and that needs to be signed from the individual who is, who is making the purchase, or their supervisor. And that is a requirement. We do have specific signing and approval limits for our employees, and a lot of it is based on our job titles. A $500 limit is allowable for supervisors, $1,500 for division managers and police department captains, $2,500 for department heads, and then anything up to $20,000 is our city administrator, and above that requires council approval as well. Proper signatures must be in place by all of the appropriate signing authorities before we approve those invoices, or before we process them for payment. So, for example, if we receive a fuel bill in a month that is in the amount of $6,000, it's normally processed and coded by our fleet manager. He then takes it to Kyle as a department head for review and approval, and then it goes to Stephen for a final sign-off and authority. So, as you can see, there's three sets of eyes that actually see that before it comes to our department for payment. Once that we receive that, then we verify also that the accounts are coded appropriately as well. We then process the invoice for payment, and we start the data entry piece of it. All claims, after we enter them for data entry, need to be approved by, they're reviewed by our finance director and our administrative services director, before they're forwarded on to the finance committee. So, lots of eyes go on these claims before they come to you. Let's see. Some additional measures that we take when we're processing a claim. We definitely rely on our supervisors to ensure that merchandise has been received prior to processing the claim. We do not pay on sales quotes, purchase orders, pick tickets, or packing slips. We want to know that we received the merchandise before we paid for it. We do perform a vendor query on our system, and I'll show you that here in a little bit, to make sure that the invoices have not already been paid. Courtney spoke to the fact that there were duplicate invoices being paid through a purchase order system. One of the measurements that we take before we pay those is that we look into the vendor history, and we compare those invoice numbers with ones that we've already paid, just to make sure that we're not double paying an item. And then, we also compare the item purchased with the coding on the perjury statement. We want to make sure that if we are paying an invoice for copy paper, that that is coded to an office supply line item. Or for steel-toed boots, we want to make sure that it's coded to a uniform line item, and so that we're not miscoding and misappropriating the funds as well. So, I'm just going to do a quick vendor query on the accounting system to show you what we look for, when we're processing a claim. And I'm just going to take one that's a regular vendor that we, not familiar with this laptop computer, I'm a little slow. Okay, so, this is Hasko, and they're a regular vendor that we use each month. And here is an example of a claim that has been processed for payment for them. And as you can see up here, it gives us the claim amount. Do I need to enlarge that, or can, can you see it? Okay. So, it's the claim amounts. We processed a claim for 24603. It actually provides us with a check number that we use to pay that claim. And then, it gives us a detailed description of what it is that was listed on the invoices. And this is actually four different invoices, and we process that on one check and one claim per period. So, this is the water fund, they purchased some liquid gauge, liquid glue, I'm guessing. The sewer fund, there was nuts and bolts, and then some plates and iron fittings out of the sanitation fund. So, we can see exactly which fund, which account number, and which line item the funds were appropriated to, as well as the amounts of the claim, the invoice dates, and the invoice numbers. So, that's normally what we would see on each individual, each and every individual claim that we process. So, if there was ever a question by a supervisor, or an auditor, or anybody who wanted to know what was purchased at a specific vendor on any given month, we can just pull up a complete detailed listing for them. We also have a claim approval list, which is something that our finance committee and our council people receive a copy of for each finance run. I am going to just give you some information on this quickly, so when you receive your next claim approval list, you'll know exactly where you're looking at. Okay. So, this is a current listing, what you'll see, of claims that we have processed to date, and these are similar to what you will see this, this upcoming finance run. So, it will give us, again, the claim number, the name of the vendor that we're paying, the items that were actually being purchased, along with the invoice number, the, the date of the invoice, and the amounts. And then, it also gives us a description of the fund and line items that they're appropriated to. And then, at the very end of the report, it will also list a breakdown by fund. So, $18,000 is appropriated out of the general fund, we've got $84,000 out of the water fund, the sewer fund, the sanitation, and the airport fund, and so on. So, it'll give you a complete breakdown of all of the claims that we process. After the claims have been approved and required by the supervisors, again, they're forwarded to us for review and approval, and then presented to you for payment. After you approve the checks, they are issued and cut the following day. So, Wednesday morning, our office arrives, and we process those checks and get them mailed out to individuals. The check issuance process is designed so that checks can never be processed without the approval of our administrative services director or our city administrator. I don't have the authority or the ability to process a check with, by myself, without somebody else's second set of eyes, and it's a computerized password process. So, rest assured that we can't just cut checks at, at our leisure. It does require our supervisor authority to do that. After that, we actually have a program called Positive Pay that we use in conjunction with our bank, with Wells Fargo, and it's a fraud prevention measure that- And it's a fraud prevention measure that we have in place. After we process the checks, we create an electronic file, and we upload that to the bank. And, um, that's done the same day as well. And it is a fraud prevention measure. It notifies the bank of the checks that we have issued at any given period of time or on that check run. So, as our checks are clearing through our bank account, the bank compares our check ledger with the check that's coming through. They look at the, the dollar amount, the payee, and the date, and the check number, and compare those and make sure that they match with what we've said that we've issued. And if there's not a match, they'll reject that, provide us with the notification, "Hey, did you really intend to cut this check? What's going on? What's the discrepancy?" And then, we rectify that issue from there. Um, it's not often that that happens. Once in a while, if we cut a manual check, we will forget to do a positive pay upload, but the bank notifies you the very next day if there's a problem with the check going through. Uh, as far as our auditor procedures on our claims review, when our auditors arrive, they will request a listing of, uh, specific checks that we have issued. It's a spot check that they do. Uh, they look at the claim, they verify that the claims are coded appropriately, that we have the appropriate signatures in place, that a copy of the check stub is provided, and that it has the payee and the check amount, um, on that check stub. They even go to the measure of following the check all the way through the banking process. So, they contact Gloria. She'll provide them with copies of the bank reconciliations to verify that they have cleared through the bank, and to make sure that they have been endorsed by the payee. And we don't normally, they will give us a preliminary listing on our preliminary audit. When they come around, the second time of the year to, to complete the audit, they give us another listing, and there's no notification to us at all. They hand us the list, we pull those claims for them, and they, they take them and review them at that time. Um, during fiscal year 2013 and 2014, we processed a total of 2,083 claims. And I brought a couple examples of what a claim looks like. This particular claim is, it's 13 bills, and they're allocated over 14 line items. And this is only one claim that you will see on your report. So, when you think that we're just paying a bill, we really have to sort and separate and go through each one of these bills, item by item, to make sure that we're coding them appropriately. And then, the second sample bill that I brought, oops. Um, the second bill that I bought is an example of one bill. And this is one bill that we receive each month, and it's appropriated over 16 different line items. And I welcome you, if you are interested, you can sure take a look at what it is that we, that we code and how the bills are coded and, and any items details that you want to see are listed in here. Um, in this current fiscal year, we've processed 1,469 claims. And again, we're about 2/3rds into the year. Totalling 11,852,999,15. It's an average of about 122 claims per month that we run through our department. And that's, that's payable.
Your honor- I have one question. Is it, you, you and Courtney both mentioned that sometimes we had duplicate invoices that we paid. How do we get that money back?
Um, well, there's, we actually contacted the vendor and asked them if they will- Normally, they, and I can say, in the, the time that I have been processing accounts payable, it's probably happened three times, I would say. And they'll mail the check back to us, or provide a credit on our account. And then, when we receive that credit for future bills that we pay, we will run off of that credit.
Thank you.
Okay, and then the second piece that I wanted to go over really quickly with you is the accounts receivable module, and it's just very brief. Um, the accounts receivable program is used for routine invoices outside of a typical citizen utility bill. Uh, times that we would purchase an accounts receivable invoice would be if we have a lease, uh, that we need to invoice somebody for, uh, say, airport. And there's a lot of airport leases that we handle. Um, the airport, uh, restaurant, we invoice those out. Um, the DCI office building, we invoice out to the state. So, outside of a regular utility bill, we'll process those invoices through the AR program. Uh, we also use, uh, for sanitation, we have contractors that use the big roll-off containers, and they don't necessarily have a utility account with us, so we will invoice those hall charges and roll-off rentals out through the accounts receivable program. Um, our municipal court performs background checks for some businesses, employers, and then for any assessments. Um, there's some assessments that we invoice through the accounts receivable program, and others that we invoice through the utility billing program. So, as of February 28th, the close of this last month, um, our total outstanding balance for accounts receivable was 38,000. And of this figure, $18,000 consists of charges due, um, large charges due to old property cleanups. So, what I mean by that is, we had, and it dates clear back to 2010, but we had, uh, citizens who had weed violations and code violations at their property. If they don't take the initiative to clean that property up, then the city would have to go out and do that, and then we invoice the customer, and they pay for the expense that's involved in us doing, performing that cleanup. And so, some of those invoices are still sitting out there. And, uh, those folks that haven't been interested in paying those, we've placed liens on their properties. Uh, so, at some point, if they decide that they need to sell their property, those liens are going to be out there, and those amounts will have to be satisfied before we can, um, remove those liens. Um, there's approximately, um, $4,180 that we have in assessments that are scheduled to be paid out in May of this year, so that'll reduce our outstanding amount by that. And then, um, I pull statements and review them monthly, send them out to citizens, and then I follow up with phone calls for those that are over 30 days old and request payments on those outstanding invoices. Any questions on accounts receivable?
Good, thank you.
Don't, don't, hey, alright, thank you.
What we love about this system is it's such a transparent system that we have the ability to let anyone in this city that is an employee on this system. Now, we have restraints, right? So, there's only probably, I would say, six to eight maybe interactive users. Interactive is they have the ability to change things. We have that to a minimum. Mainly because of internal control, we want to know what's going on, and nobody messes with Gloria's numbers. Um, but, at any time, if anyone wants to go in and look at anything, Kyle has been very good about pushing his division people to get into this system and look at the bills. They can see whether something has been invoiced or not, they can tell how much is in their budget. So, they have daily control over, or the, the interactions that they're, they're conducting. I, I failed to introduce Gloria and me, and I'm so sorry. I, it's such an honor to work with these two ladies. Gloria was here six months prior to I, to me coming here, and that, she's been here about nine years. And then Mia came in May of 2010. The very first week Mia was here, she was off to Montana going to school for this, this training, and brought back loads of stuff that we hadn't had the time or the people to even look at what we had to be able to use that process. So, she has brought a lot of knowledge to the city well, city as well. And I'll tell you, if I had to choose two people in this whole world to work with, I'd choose them. So, let's get back to our, and we're winding down, or otherwise, I'm going to have to serve you popcorn. Okay, administrative allocations. Administrative allocations with the city of Riverton is not, uh, a rabbit in the hat. We have been praised by our auditors because of the way we come up with how we, uh, have the percentages. So, what we're saying with administrative allocations is, what I do, or what Mia, or Gloria, or the city administrator, or even you as a governing body, has some kind of an impact on a fund. Whether it's the water, airport, sewer, sanitation, senior center, endowment, general fund, whatever it is, you have time spent in that. What we don't directly bill, so, for instance, if we get an attorney bill, and Chief Broadhead has used the city attorney, then that goes through Chief Broadhead's, but, head's budget as, uh, an expense. He has a, a consultant fee that we take that out of. But, if it is something that is, um, we can't really determine overall what directive or fund that it goes to, it comes through attorneys, attorney bills, that's the part that is the administrative allocation. Something that is not directly billed, that doesn't have ownership to a specific division, uh, comes back through administrative allocations. So, as you can see, um, let's take administrative services, for instance. 21% is paid back from the water fund to the general fund, 18% wastewater, 11% sanitation, 9% airport. Well, that's 59%. Well, Courtney, how the heck did you come up with that? I can tell you how we came up with that, because we count the number of claims. That's the only way we know how much work, work we're doing for whatever fund there is. The water has had a huge amount of claims submitted because of the projects they're on. But also, we've had some because of the general fund with the Riverview Road. So, we count the number of claims, how much, and then we come up with the percentage on that per fund, because Mia can tell us how much we pay out of the fund and what fund it is. Um, another interesting one is, um, by the way, I don't think we did law enforcement or administrative allocations until after Chief Broadhead came here, and we thought, "Well, law enforcement is going by the water plant, and the law enforcement is going by the wastewater plant, and there's..." And, you know, the airport, well, not airport, I can't say that, because that's a direct bill. But, um, so those are coming back to us. We do not use it as a balancing act at all. I can tell you that straight. Um, we make sure, fleet maintenance. Fleet maintenance is down to the amount of equipment that is per fund. Sanitation, you can see, is very high. Sanitation has a lot of, um, equipment when it comes to fleet maintenance. So, they're at 15%, whereas water, 6%. There's not very many vehicles, right? So, we're able to, um, get through the percentages that way. Mayor Baker also asked me to talk to you just for a second about depreciation. I know that that's not any, anyone's forte, and it's not even mine. What I do is, in fixed assets module, is once a year, I go in and I book anything over $5,000. And has a useful life in excess of, excess of two years. The city used to use that as an inventory module, and it was like, "Why are we booking computers, and workstations, and chairs, and desks in, in a fixed asset module?" Because, first of all, we're not going to depreciate a chair out. A chair can last 20 years, or a chair can last two years. It depends on the use. Dispatchers, they go through a lot of chairs, but they're in their chairs 24 hours, right? So, we don't do that. We haven't done that for quite a few years. It's, um, $5,000 or more. And, uh, course, in fixed asset properties, buildings, and then we have the, the plants, and then any kind of equipment and infrastructure. The thing, the interesting thing about infrastructure is, if Mr. Butterfield decides to replace a piece of road, that's not capitalized, that's considered maintenance. Now, if it was a brand-new road, that would be considered a fixed, fixed asset, and we would book that. When we do projects, for instance, we've had, um, Riverton Water Supply go on for two, three years. That hasn't been booked yet. Because we have to wait until that project has been completed in order to book it as an asset. Our assets increased by 1.6 million this year. And that was due to... It's just where I go-
Cut me off guard here.
A big project.
Yes, a big project. A big project.
Yeah, I can't-
Airport.
Airport, okay. So, it's, it's really, um, complicated. I'm glad we only have to do it once a year, but there's a reason we do it. It helps with our assets and liabilities. This is one of your favorite ones. This is talking about long-term and, long-term and defaced debt. This is a great picture for the council, especially this council, who's, um, really geared into what our debt is. This is a spreadsheet since, uh, 1989. And the reason we chose that is because we just paid off this debt of 1.2 million. And, um, so you can see that, beginning in 1989, our debt, outstanding debt, was 4,763,000. As of today, Gloria figured that out, our standing loan debt is 2.6 million. I think that's, I think that's good, considering that we have a cash balance of 10 million, sometimes off and on. But, I think, I think that's realistic. I think the city's doing a good job. We were even praised this year by our auditors because we do so much on a cash basis. We're not paying a lot in debt and in loans. Uh, reserves, again, reserve, reserves, another one of your favorite topics. We have to have a statement of investment policy on hand. The city passed a statement of investment policy in 1997. Actually, it was enacted in 1996, where the state statute says every municipality has to have one. You have to be transparent with, with the public, who's investing, how much money you're investing, who you're investing with. And, um, so that's why we, then we revised that in 2007 when I, when I came, and we revised it in 2010, and went from 17% to 18.5% reserves. So, this is a city-specific statement of investment poli, policy. We maintain, maintain a reserve in each of the principal funds. We maintain a level sufficient for unforeseen needs in economic environment, if we had a disaster or something, like a flood or something, right? My favorite, favorite sentence out of this is, "The reserve is intended to provide for unanticipated expenditures, expenditures or revenue shortfalls of non-recurring nature." A non-recurring nature would be, uh, the era mesh network project. Uh, that brought in 1.5 million dollars, that was a grant. We knew that once that mesh system was installed, that that grant would go away. But, part of that was also that we brought on two new police officers. Cannot supplant grant funds, which means you can't bring something in and start something and just let the grant pay for it and then do away with it. So, we have to maintain those positions, and we have to maintain those salaries. The non-recurring nature is, that went from a grant to now that city operations. Okay, it's not subsidized by a grant anymore. That would be a non-recurring nature. Operational reserve, this is again, statement of investment policy. It says that, um, we will add to the total fund balance 18.5% of the operational revenue. Again, remember, operational is like sales tax and liquor licenses. It's not era funds, it's not anything that's, that's grant-related. So, that downsizes us a little bit from a general fund of $9 million. And we talk about operational is probably more like 5 or 6 million, do you think? This is probably something I'm going to be bringing to you when it's, when we talk about enterprise fund reserve. It says that we will add to the fund balance 100% of the annual depreciation. This was a conversation between Bill and I, that's why I look at this and smile. Of, not, of 100%, not, with a minimum of a million and not to exceed 2.5 million. Now, this probably wasn't one of Bill and I's favorite conversations, but he had a good point. If something happens with the water system, can you really have $630,000 sitting in reserve? Not really. We know with the booster station that anything happens with that water system, wastewater system, is critical, and we better have the money on hand. So, Gloria and I go a step above and beyond that. We don't do that, we adhere to the operational. Because the operational is always going to be more, what we have found, than reaching our annual depreciation at the end of the year. And by the way, we get that from, from our audit report at the end of the year. So, this is as of today. When we budgeted, the 1st of July, last July, we told you, the governing body, the city of Riverton, that we would put 18.5% in reserve for the general fund, water fund, sewer fund, and sanitation. We have come to you two or three times and said, "We're getting a little close. We're not going to be able to maintain that reserve." In fact, I think even not too long ago, you were told that we didn't have the reserve, right? This is the good news. This is what cash does for us. We are able to replenish our reserve. So, if I looked at that, I would say, okay, general fund, we projected that we, our operational revenue would be 6.7 million. As of today, we're at 4.5 million. Technically, we only need to have 833,000 in reserve to meet your policy of at 18.5%. However, we have 1.5 million in reserve. Now, that's in addition to our cash, and I'll talk to you about that a little bit later. So, as you can see, there's maybe a couple funds, the water fund, we're still recouping a little bit, but Gloria and I look at that every month and decide, "How can we move money? Should we move money? How are the receipts coming in?" And then, we move money accordingly. So, the only one really that we're concerned about now, because the use is going to start picking up. We're not going to be worried about cash reserves and replenishing those right now, because we know the use is coming up with water and sewer. So, that's how we do our cash reserve. Now, by the way, we do have separate reserve accounts, operational reserve accounts for our funds. It's not, even though we have all of our money in one- It's not even though we have all of our money in one pocket, we still segregate those funds according to what their cash reserves should be. So Wild Star is one of our main places. We became 99.9% liquid when we started doing these large projects. So we just took the easy way out. Wild Star was giving us the best amount. We used to have CDs. We used to go out for bid every six months. We haven't had the cash on hand to do that, to keep our money tied up. Oh, so if you have any questions, this would be a good time. I'd like to, would you mind add the flip chart? Isn't this a great thing? It says, this is where we started to draw taller bars to please you guys. I had to look a little bit for that, it was fun. So this is a flip chart over here, as you can see by the little cartoon, but underneath that, and we're going to leave this up for a while, we're going to leave this up probably for a month or so. And I know you can't read it from where you are, but this is all the capital projects that the city has done since 2007. What is interesting is the bottom line. The bottom line, you can see that we have had $40 million in projects. Bottom line, you can see that there's 37, 38 million dollars in grants. Bottom line, you can see where we have spent money out of our reserves. So when we talk about reserves today and we talk about whether we have the ability to meet that or not, this is an ongoing process, ladies and gentlemen. It's not something that we move money every single day. We we have a vision with our projects, we have a vision when it comes to employees, and and I think we do a pretty good job making sure that that you're solid. So are there any questions for finance?
Your Honor.
Hi, John.
Would it be possible to get, I know I had it at one point and we lost it or misplaced it, the listing for which codes go to which accounts?
Yes.
For the finance reports, possibly electronically, so I don't lose it again.
Okay, so you're you're, do you want to, one of you want to hold that up? So you're talking about the counts and the objects. Okay, we'd be happy to do that. We'll send it electronically. Anyone would like that laminated and in their drawer? Electronically, perfect, great. Mayor, do you have any questions of me?
Mr. Bailey? You say, again, at the risk of sounding stupid, but you say YO Star is where you have the money kept. What is YO Star?
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
YO Star is for governmental entities only and is invested on behalf of the state of Wyoming. And that's where we get the best interest rate because it's all pooled money from all the entities that are that are in there. So thank you for that. I take some things for granted.
Go ahead. You said six months, right? It's reviewed every six months.
Your Honor.
Go ahead. The money that you're using YO Star is is turned over every six months or has a limit of six months.
Your Honor, we used to. We haven't anymore because we needed the cash.
Oh.
The thing about YO Star is it is very, very liquid. I can get funds transferred within a day. I'm not locked into a CD. The interest rate has been the best interest rate that we have seen in three years. For instance, the senior center used to get $36,000 a year back in '07 and '08 on their account. They're down to...
Five or six?
Five or 6,000 maybe? Well, probably not even that because the city doesn't get that. City makes about $300 or $400 a month on interest. So no one's paying. It's a good time to be liquid.
Thank you.
So so the the YO Star is just like a money market account at the bank?
Yeah.
Okay, and with a phone call, maybe you can transfer those funds directly from YO Star into the bank account?
Cool.
Okay, so then it's so then it floats all the time. That way you can keep your bank balance low where it's drawing no interest and we can put it in YO Star where it's drawing almost no interest. Mr. Bailey?
I guess that was my question is, I know basically CDs and money markets aren't paying hardly anything. What are we getting at YO Star, if I may ask?
They go on a current yield and I'm not sure as of today what that is. I can tell you, it's probably less than a half a percent.
Okay, yeah. So so but that's 10 times better than you would get on a CD.
Yes. Gloria, on our money market, we did move money about a year ago into a money market because the interest was supposed to be supposed to be better through a money market. So that's why we have two accounts at Wells Fargo, the money market and the operational. But I think it's a half a percent.
There's another advantage to YO Star as opposed to from my experience is that instead of having somebody on staff who's constantly monitoring every CD for its maturity date and getting it turned over and handling the paperwork and doing all that kind of stuff, here we have the money in a single account that we get a we can we can get a report over the internet on it at any time. We know exactly where that money is, what kind of interest we're getting, but we don't have to manage that anymore because we've got the state portfolio managers making making that work. So I mean, it really, it really has, I think it saves a lot of administrative overhead to to go in that direction rather than to have somebody on staff who's your investment specialist who's playing the market all the time trying to get the best interest rate.
And your honor, this just rolls into the fund that the state of Wyoming and their billions of dollars.
Billions, that's it, that's it.
And they're only earning a half a percent? I don't know if they're doing a very good job, but not that I could do any better.
Well, and so, yeah, and so it's part of that, yeah. And so, yeah, we're it's just that interest rate isn't very good. So but at any rate, then that makes us funds immediately liquid to us so that if something comes up, you don't have to go cash a CD and lose the lose all the interest on penalties and that type of thing.
I would assume that we don't have to worry about account balance limits like we would at a bank and FDIC and insurance.
That's 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 correct. You kind of touched on that, on the investment policy. We've got, wasn't that one of the things we kind of got gigged on with our audit?
Well.
Was it, we had a bank that we had a bank that didn't have enough security on deposit?
Absolutely. We didn't have enough pledged securities for collateral.
Yeah, so if we have if we have even say, say, we we passed a million dollars through that bank and they had it for 24 hours, theoretically, they would have to have pledged securities of a million dollars to cover that. That's what the law would require them to do in order to be a banker for us. And so and so occasionally, we might find a great big check coming to a bank and then that bank isn't ready for it, doesn't have enough pledged securities. And then the auditors stumble onto that and notice that for a short period of time they weren't covered.
Right.
Well, YO Star's exempt from that. But we have the assets of the state of Wyoming.
So, Your Honor, in conclusion, I'd like to again thank Gloria and Mia for all the help. Mia's two frontline people, Debbie Bessie and April Ramsey, I mean, they pull in a lot of money every day and they are very conscientious about where it goes and and they're a great face for the city. We're very proud to have them on board as well. Same thing with our municipal court clerk, Lila Thompson, has been here for a long time and boy, can't find anything more meticulous than than Lila's records. As well as payroll, we haven't talked much about payroll and HR, but Kristin does an excellent job. That costs the city about $500,000 a month is what we run in out of payroll with payroll plus liabilities at the end of the month with health insurance and retirement. So that's huge. When you're talking about meeting FICA and withholding deadlines, that money has to be in there in three days. So with with that team, I think we're we're doing a good job for you. And I'd like to thank my peers and and of course supervisors that do a very good job and are very conscientious and even Kyle, I mean, he's looking at and boy, nothing gets by Kyle. Same thing with Mike, you just don't, you don't find those negative line items happening. So that's that's very good. That's a good level of eyes to have on it.
Good. Does anybody else have any questions about how this works? I mean, I mean, you can't know it all, you know? At our here at this bench, you can't know it all, so.
No, but you're more comfortable seeing that the people are concerned and they're conservative and they're doing a job that they love to do and serve.
Thank you. That's good, good comment. Thank you. I think we're done. Anybody else have any business for us tonight? Did you want to talk something about WAM? Did you want to mention that? We've got this WAM meeting on March 31st. Anybody wants to come to that?
Yes, Your Honor, we do need RSVP for that. That is the new system that they set up at our winter conference where they've expanded the regions in Wyoming from four to six. And now they're going to be electing amongst yourself. It used to be you had to go to the meeting and submit applications and then the board would elect someone to be representative for the region. And now we're going to have our first meeting here in Riverton. It's going to be in Riverton and Casper is a part of that region. And they'll be here and we'll have a meeting. WAM will be here to start off these meetings. And then they're going to elect a couple of representatives that will serve on the board. And so would encourage all of you to attend that. It'll be fairly interesting and particularly if you're interested in serving on the board. And so if you can let me know that you're going to attend that meeting, we have to RSVP so that you know how many people are going to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? I thanks Courtney and staff for bringing this to us tonight. I think we're better prepared to read the financial statements of the city and and kind of have an understanding of what's going on there and appreciate your effort to make a good presentation to us tonight. Thank you. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, and moved in seconded, favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're done.